You guys want to do it? So I'm not, I really don't take a stance in this one. I can, either way, which way you guys want to go, I support it 100%. So whether you voted in or you decide not to go forward with it, then I support you guys.
Well, I came into tonight's discussion to listen and mainly to see if I felt there was any basis to change the wording of the proposed moratorium. Frankly, I was asked earlier today whether I would be open to not moving forward with the moratorium by a resident of Acton. And my response was, as a board member, yes, I believe that I have a responsibility to listen and to consider, but it would take a lot for me to change my mind on the necessity of a moratorium. I'm not persuaded after tonight that we do not need a moratorium. I still believe a moratorium is needed for the reasons that we've articulated in the proposed language. And it occurred to me, there was a lot of discussion tonight about some people's perception that this was about discrimination against a particular pit, which I know that that is not accurate. Conversely, towards the end of the meeting, someone asked about, when is the, you know, the general town meeting? Why can't we wait? Is there any reason that this has to be rushed? And in my view, that suggestion, or if not request, kind of asks us to now consider favoring a particular pit. Because tonight's discussion, not initiated by us, but this became largely a discussion about the peppants and the application that we didn't know about. So I feel like what we're being asked to do is to not do this now because then the peppants' application could proceed. And I don't see that as being any different than the reverse, which would have been to initiate it to discriminate against the peppants or anyone else. So to me, the basis for a moratorium, my concerns, the basis still exists regardless of who that might affect in the immediate future. So I am going to support moving forward with the moratorium for those reasons.
Yeah, my mind hasn't been changed to say not to move forward with the moratorium. We did not know about the peppants. I don't believe the moratorium is saying we're ending mining in Acton. I think there was some good questions and discussion about the main requirements. And I for one, I don't know how my fellow board members feel, but I for one, when we sign off on there will be no negative impact to water quality, or there will be no negative impact to the flora and fauna. To me, we're just signing off on that without any real data or studies to back it up. And that's one of the answers to your questions, Dennis, about what's the, you know, what's the hurt? Is I think, again, I'm speaking for John Quab, but when we sign off on those things, I don't think we really know. So to me, it's not about ending mining, but addressing these issues with more facts and figures, if you will. And I think what can be done can certainly be done in 180 days. We committed to, as was stated, to several operators earlier that we would work in collaboration with them and with the residents, frankly. And I think that's a process that has to happen, whether the voters vote for it or not. We're going to have to do that. Certainly enforcement is an issue, but that's a separate issue. It's the new operations and having the data, having the analyses that allow us to make an informed decision on them. I personally don't think we've had that information in the past. And that's kind of what's needed, in my view, in the ordinance, is some of that more specific analyses that would allay concerns that we heard about tonight from some of the residents.
Well, I didn't hear anything that spoke to changing the specific verbiage from anyone in the audience tonight. That's one thing we look for is that, you know, but I do have something in terms of the actual language that I feel is worth discussing. I wanted to know, again, from the board, if they thought that this moratorium was designed to allay more permits for extension of conditional use permits. Is that, was that the goal, the board was to cease all permits? Or was it just for new and expanded area of pits? Because if you look at the verbiage here on the fifth whereas, it says, requiring an immediate moratorium on any new or expanded mineral extraction pits for the preservation of public health, safety, and welfare. We're only saying new and expanded. It doesn't say anything about conditional use permits or expansion of conditional use. And then you follow that to the next paragraph down where it references the above paragraph right after the date. It says, seeking permits for or approval of any new mineral extraction pit or the expansion of any existing mineral extraction pit. So we're not, I'm just, I have a simple way we can change the verbiage if we wish to include these changes to conditional use permits? Or do we want to stick with the verbiage that any new mineral extraction pit or the expansion of any existing mineral extraction pit?
So you're saying add conditional use?
Well, my simple remedy would be in the first paragraph I read, on any new or expanded mineral extraction permits for the preservation of public health, safety, and welfare. Does everybody see where I am there? And then in the second paragraph, right after, insert date of special town meeting, I was just having, seeking approval for any new mineral extraction pit for the expansion of any existing mineral extraction permit. So I hope the board sees the distinction that I'm drawing there. Personally, I'm not advocating for one or the other, but I've heard both. I've heard that this will stop expansion of conditional use permits, but I have, we haven't been clear on it, and this verbiage is not, I'd say it's not bulletproof in preventing that. If somebody wanted to, they could argue that this is just saying expansion of the pit itself.
Yeah, that's not the intention. It would be for new conditional use, and we can rewrite that so that it does say, make that point that out. It's not the expansion of inside the already use of that extraction pit is not what we're trying to halt.
Okay, right. And that's what I felt like the board has been saying.
Right.
But I feel like this verbiage is not, is not strong enough to uphold that and that we would, I mean, this verbiage is still going to stop new pits and the physical expansion of old existing pits, but it would not, not stop somebody from, you know, selling mulch out of the pit if they want to come in and change their conditional use permit to include resale of materials. They didn't have resale of materials on their original conditional use permit. This verbiage would still allow them to do that. And I'm not sure which way I, I'm not trying to persuade the board one way or the other. I just, I feel like it's an inconsistency that we've, that I noticed.
I had kind of the opposite of that posed to me, that people were afraid that we were saying, for example, if they had a conditional use permit, that they could use 10 acres of land within their pit for that approved purpose, and now they've come to the end of that 10 acres, that they couldn't go on and use the reclamation process for that 10 and start on another 10. And I don't believe that's our intent at all. I don't see that as a new use or an expanded use. That's just moving on to an already approved use, in my view.
Right. Each pit has an acreage to be mined out.
Correct.
That's different because they're all different sized deposits.
Yep.
And a lot of the pits, it is 10 acres, open before they have to revegetate to open that 11th acre, sort of speed. Not all pits are, you know, some pits aren't even 10 acres, so. But I feel like this isn't really speaking to that particular issue. I mean, if the board wants to push through with the language as is, then I don't have a problem with that. I just feel like it should be stated that, I mean, and it could be, it could be what we want to do, and then we would be able to see these existing conditional use permits during the 180 days and clean up some of those before we came back to it. But maybe it would be more equitable to say, all permits.
I can see both sides to it, really. And I think probably for the voters, that if they see a new use erupting in a pit that's been approved through the conditional use process, that they're probably going to be upset because they're going to say, hey, I thought we were stopping everything new for now, not shutting anyone down, but stopping any new for now to get a grip on and consistency and so forth. So I'm kind of inclined to include the verbiage that you're suggesting.
Are you just trying to spell it out clear for the voter, is what your intentions you're trying to do?
Well, if somebody wanted to change their conditional, existing conditional use permit during the moratorium, I don't think this verbiage would stop them if they wanted to do that. I'm just saying. Because it just says, expansion of any existing mineral extraction pit. So that we're talking about the physicality of the pit, not the conditions.
Right.
You know, because we know you can have a change of condition that the size doesn't change. Very few things change, but they want to be, you know, they want to operate on Saturdays now.
Yeah. I actually had the word operations in there at one point, and it ended up being edited out.
Right. Well, I think when you say a change of operations, it's kind of scary and ambiguous for the, for the landowner.
So, okay.
Because we're not trying to stop operations, we're trying to cease permits, as far as I know.
Right.
So I mean, I had, I'll just show you quickly the, it's really not that much that you'd have to do to. I was going to, right here, pits would become permits.
Mm-hmm.
And then down here, you remove permit.
And put pit.
And put permit instead of pit right there.
Yep.
So something like that. It doesn't have to be exactly like that.
Gavin, did I hear you mention change of use as well?
Well, it would be good to get those, get that verbiage in there because that is the mechanism we use. But I think, I mean, I think just permit would cover it. But are you talking change of conditional use or change of use? Change of conditional use? Yeah, I mean, we could just have expansion of any existing mineral extraction conditional use permit. Because that's, that's our mechanism. Because, and then the next paragraph below, no town official, agent, or employee shall accept or approve any applications, plans, permits, licenses, and/or fees relating to any uses governed by this moratorium ordinance. And where it says, by this moratorium ordinance, then you refer to the two paragraphs above. I don't know. I feel it's a loophole that got built in there somehow.
It's different from what we were in the first one.
Right, right. And at the last meeting, honestly, I hadn't gone over it in the same scrutiny as I had for the first one.
What do you think, John?
I'm okay with that change. If you want to put conditional use permits up in the fifth one, I was just looking at the next, the follow-on paragraph to see what's the proposed change there.
In the third one up from the bottom?
Yeah.
After it says, insert date of special town meeting. Seeking approval of any new mineral extraction pit or the expansion of any existing mineral extraction conditional use permit.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
So get rid of existing mineral extraction and put?
No, I would leave it.
Okay.
Any existing mineral extraction conditional use permit. Get rid of the word pit. Honestly, we don't need it.
Conditional, okay.
The ordinance itself, everything is, the verbiage is mineral extraction. Because not all of these extractions are actually pits. But that's beside the point. So that was all my input in terms of the hearing. I hope we answered everyone's questions thoroughly. It was mostly state blanket statements and not specific questions, but.
We did get a few questions, but.
Yeah, some of the, yeah, but.
Get back as best we can.
That was, that's for the Warren Finance Committee, and I think his is more just making sure that we know what we're getting ourselves into and supporting, making sure there's supporting documents and factual stuff.
Anything to add, Pat?
So Gavin, do you want to put that into the form of a motion?
Sure. I mean, I'll make a motion that we amend the verbiage of this moratorium ordinance to include expansion of conditional use permits. In the third paragraph from the bottom, any new mineral extraction pit or the expansion of any existing mineral extraction conditional use permit.
Second?
All in favor?
I move that we put the now revised moratorium ordinance proposed language forward to the select board, Warren Finance Committee, wherever it needs to go.
Second? All in favor? All opposed? 4 to 1? You just have to make that minor change. And then it goes to, moves over to Dennis and just like. I know. I missed your voice. I had to get you to go talk one more time.
Oh, before we, we don't have a motion to adjourn yet, but I'd like to suggest that we consider having some workshops for the planning board members that can make it. They would be advertised, so the public can be here. They would be recorded, and the purpose would be to work on the various warrant articles that we need. If, you know, if there's two or three of us that can get together and work on them, not vote on them, but work on them so that the next time the board meets as a whole, there's something in front of us to tweak and vote on, I think we might get some traction. So I don't know how others would feel about that.
Well, I think that's why we, last week, we decided to have a meeting next, you know, no meeting, another meeting after that.
Yeah. But if we're, unless we're going to do that fairly regularly.
Right.
I don't think we're going to get stuff done.
No, I think we kind of all agreed that we're going to be busy the next month, month and a half.
So.
I do have some, are you willing to review some of the proposed changes tonight? Or do we feel like it's been a full meeting? I do have some quick changes.
Yep.
I wouldn't mind going through, and I'd love to get some draft documents for some of the.
Yeah, also, I'd like you guys to review, like, I emailed everybody, and I don't know if you have them.
That's right.
I'd like to have everybody review them. I do need some comments so I can give them back to North Star. Yeah. Everything that I had emailed you.
I do have some comments on the North Star, but I feel like even more importantly, we get some documents, you know, with the land use chart, with the section applicable for what we've been working on. Because we don't really have active working documents. I want to get, you know, a rough draft of where it's going to be in the ordinance for each one of, you know, short-term rentals. All the things that we've been focused on as a board.
Yeah, I kind of brought that up to Jason in one of our conversations that we've had this week, you know, was to get it out of our brains and on paper and.
Right, and then we're all looking at the same piece of paper.
Right.
And.
We've talked about it, we've beaten a dead horse for a couple of months.
Right. Like, very simply, the construction of storage buildings. Ashley, do you know what we need to have changed in this construction of storage buildings? Because it's very simple, and if you could do it for us, we would be able to have a document for that that would be presentable, and then we could, we could move on to the next thing. Really, it's just some simple, do you have a copy of this in front of you? The storage building. I know I'm just pulling one out at random, but this one we could really, like, it really wouldn't take much to have a document. We could vote and say, this is it at the next meeting.
What are you looking at?
The storage building that got turned down at the last.
Town meeting?
Town meeting because the.
Yeah, I just hold on.
It was administrative.
Oh, yeah. No, no. No, it's nothing we got recently.
I think the one I have is.
And I can, I can show you what needs to be done so that we can get it done. Because this is one that we could be.
Done and over with?
Moving on. The reason they objected to this is there's two letters next to each one of these things in the land use chart. This was turned to I. This now needs to be J, but it has an I that's crossed out next to it. So we just need to go in and.
Clean it up?
Get rid, you know, this is J, this is supposed to be K without a line through it, and that J with a line through it needs to be gone. L, M without a line through it, these secondary letters are gone, and then it goes on to the next page with the same theme. Well, I mean, it's hard. You need, you need to have this, everybody needs to have the same document in front of them.
In the right color.
Well, that's what happened. That's what we did, you know, years ago. We gave the color for one day.
You want me to get you a rainbow? I'll get you a bunch of different colors.
I'm not picky about that. I just want, you know, like, we talked about the definition, of definition of a structure. All we need to do is print up the page of the definitions that has that new definition of a structure, or however we chose to change our existing definition imposed into it so we could say, yes, this is it. This is the second thing we want to put forward to the select. Because I think if you open up the liquid document of the zoning order, it's going to have this, this issue right on it, would be, I guess.
You have a liquid document?
I would think so. You have to have something that you.
You're just being sarcastic.
Well, I don't know exactly how it works, but I think that those, these, it's probably still in there, just like that.
This part right here, right?
Yes, the, how we have two letters next to each.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
You just need to.
Just take that out.
Right, well, this is supposed to be I.
That's how it was presented at the town meeting, like that?
Exactly.
Right. Somehow it got changed.
I just don't remember. I was there, but I don't remember that being an issue.
Yeah, somehow it got changed around.
I think it had to do with the photocopying. That's why I was talking about the color and shade, because there was a shaded area, and then there was one that was a shade with a line through it.
Right, because we dealt with white paper at the town meeting.
Couldn't wrap our head around it quick enough to say, this is what happened.
Yeah, and this has been changed to O, but it still has the N with a line through it. And this N has a line through it.
So it was like a, it was like a draft that never, it never got finalized. They left it in drafts, they left it in draft spot, you know?
So this would be very simple to get straightened out.
Right.
But I think also what we have to be cautioned about is looking at the document that's in front of us and then comparing it to the document that, what we approved was not what was presented.
I agree with it.
It's bizarre.
Yeah, because we approved it.
I don't know how that happened. I don't know. But I do think it had to do with photocopying, just to say it again.
Yeah, because when we approved it, it didn't have all those other things that I can remember. I mean. Do you remember, John?
For that one in particular, it was just the shading, the lining, the Is and Js and Ks. In fact, this is an old one that the letters are, the cross out letter is right, and the new letter is, I mean, the new letter is right, the cross one out, but that's not what went before the town board, the town hall. And I said afterwards, that's a lesson learned. Once we submit it to them, before it actually makes it in, we should prove it.
It must get recopied? Like, how does that happen?
Well, I think they just photocopied a draft instead of the finished version.
Yeah, I think they had a wrong one.
How that happened, but we can't worry about that now.
Yeah. I think there's, I mean, I can blame it on a lack of confusion because, you know, downstairs was pretty messed up, you know?
And I think the feedback, it was just because of that, just the typo type things and stuff on that.
Yeah.
I think they were happy with it, but it was just the N of the I to the O to the B to the G.
We couldn't write on it because it wasn't written right.
Right. So we just changed that and fixed those little typos. I think it still.
I don't think there were any other objectives to that particular.
No, no, that was strictly administrative.
Hopefully, I mean, we just need to get, you know, actual documents in front of us for the new verbiage.
I can try to find where these were and get these corrected for you guys so that we can see them next time. Is that what you're asking, Gavin?
For that, yeah.
Yeah? Because, I mean, that's a pretty easy.
Right.
As long as I can find the document.
I'd like to just back up and say, I support Bernie's request to have a workshop, whoever can make it. We can get some help from Ashley for the, putting it in this format. Because I feel like, you know, you want feedback now to go back to.
Well, we have, so I don't, I don't have it on me right now. I have a consultant, too.
I have, I have written comments on the three copies from the consultant so we can get them back to them if you want to run through them tonight.
I'd rather. I'd rather go through it.
Have a special meeting.
And get back to them once, rather than back and forth, back and forth, and I don't think I'm ready to do this tonight.
Okay.
If everyone else is.
Well, we're gonna have to do it either tonight or tomorrow, uh, next Thursday.
Thursday.
So, that's, and that's fine, so, just so you guys know, next Thursday, because of the time restraint, I have to put it through, the Pepin application is gonna be on, in front of you for conditional use, because no, the moratorium isn't passed, you know, it still has to be voted on, but they have thirty days. We, I told them that, I was not stalling them whatsoever, I just told them, we had way too much already, we were invested too mu, too deep in the ordinances, and we didn't have the time to do some of this stuff, so if they didn't mind, we would push them back to the first week in February, after we knew what we were doing for warrant articles. But, that, I got a legal letter, saying that I had to get them on, so that's, so, we're gonna, if we have time for them, that's how it works, so if next week, we.
Did you send out the?
No, next, next, next week, one twenty.
Did you send out the agenda?
Next week.
Agenda for next week?
Huh? I did send out the agenda, so, also, as well as that, is Seth McCoy was able to get all the surveying and, and everything all done, he was able to, so he is coming in next week, so the agenda for next week is set for Seth McCoy's conditional use. Roundtable discussion to work on these, and if we have time after that, because that takes precedent. If we have time after that, we'll entertain the application from the Pepins extraction, mineral extraction pit.
Just be a presentation.
Yeah, yeah, so I have their whole, I have their, I have their application, it's, it's what I understand, I believe it to be complete, but that's your, just, you guys have to look at that and, and review it, and, but that, it's you know, I know we don't have, I know we don't have the time to be doing it, but I, I have to put it out there.
The document that I had Jason printed off from Maine Fish and Wildlife, that is for that area of Pepin Pit.
Yeah.
And they, when I called the fellow at Maine Fish and Wildlife, he, they do work with D E P, so they knew about it, and within a day I had that.
I read that letter today too, that, from him, and it stated pretty much that they do not have enough evidence or, or information to come to any conclusions, so it wasn't, he, he wasn't for it or against it, he literally came out and stated that what you guys have, what the survey company, Corner Post had presented the state, it was too vague, and they didn't, they didn't have enough information to come to any determination of what it would, you know?
For the habitat.
Yeah, for all that stuff, so, they were lacking, they were lacking information that given, the state was, was given, so they couldn't make an actual determination.
Right, it was a letter to Dana.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I wrote.
I, in, in the interest of trying to move these things forward, I, I'd like to see if members of the board can get together between now and next Thursday. I'd like, if we could get copies of your written comments, I had a lot of comments on the solo thing, just a lot of stuff that didn't even make sense and conflicted.
Right.
The new one didn't really resolve that. I think the mixed use and the.
Contractor yards.
Contractor yards, Bernie, I, I hope you saw Bernie's email, I thought he made some good points, I think the more I thought about the mixed use one, is, we, we do have to simplify that somehow, and focus it on the commercial zones. And, you know, I'm not sure we even need a definite, definition of mixed use if we adjust the definition of commercial in the, in the definitions. But that's something, I think if we could sit down, without having to work our brains through Seth McCoy.
Well, that, I agree.
And, and a town meeting, and then to go through these.
Yeah.
You could focus it, and we could have a little administrative help to get things in the, the picture of the, you know, with the.
And that was what I was trying to do for the twentieth, but it doesn't work the way I want it.
Right.
You know, I, I wish I could, in a perfect world, we would have just, next week, just for ourselves.
But it, I, I think we've learned over the course of my year and a half or whatever, you know, we, we have to deal with what comes forward. We had a couple of meetings this year that were light, so we kicked these things around. But that's what we did, we kicked them around, we had some good conversation, people did some good homework, we have a lot of information.
Now we gotta bring.
It's time to sit down, and let's put a proposal, as you're saying, that looks like this, that then the full board can take a look at and.
So again, next, so next week, we, we aren't obligated to actually review that, if we are. The agenda is written so that we can work on our ordinance, and if we come, if we finish that at a timely, at a, at a timely manner, then we'll review their new, new business, so that, it's, we don't have to review, we just have to entertain the idea of reviewing it.
I, I got it.
The applicant's gonna be here.
Those, Mike.
Well, applicant's gonna be here, and then.
We need to get it on paper.
Yes, and if we come to the meeting, and we do Seth McCoy, and we haven't done anything else, and what we've done tonight, we'll be doing the same thing.
Right.
We're never gonna get.
Right, and then screw it later on.
I think Bernie's right, whoever can sit down.
But do we need to give ten days, so that if we have a quorum, we're gonna have to give a ten-day notice, correct?
For what?
It's not a meeting, nothing's being voted on.
Right, it's a workshop to work online.
Let me, let me, let me ask the powers above me to, how that works.
It's been done before, but I don't know as to notice, go ahead, Pat.
Can I ask some help on putting out emails? And the feasibility of putting out ideas without voting, sending it out to everybody, do you think that that could help us put something together a little sooner, rather than later? If we did it electronically?
Well, we, we're missing the, the knowledge from Gavin by, when it comes to email. He's still, he's still living in Pony Express World.
I'm, I'm willing to, to read you what I've got, and have the secretary put it down and print it out, that's how we used to do it.
But he can come to the town hall, and that's what he does.
Yeah, we, I, if, put it on record now, and then she.
That's what I was hoping, so that, so that at your special meeting you're talking about, like this, for the short-term rentals, we get another one of these things printed out, it says, I don't know what it says, short, long-term, all rentals.
Yeah, all rentals.
And then, like on the back, there's a simple change that we got from the emergency management director. Where he said, number five, each bedroom should have a code compliant egress window or equivalent. We need to change that verbiage to say each rental unit will be, will have proper access to egress according to the active fire department, just throw that in there. Instead of every bedroom window, get this thing printed out, so we have it as a document at this special meeting we're gonna have. I just, I'm having a hard time not working with.
Paper.
Yeah. Yeah. So you think you can do that, Ashley?
So we also, for February fourth, I believe it is, we don't have to have these things per se completed and all done. We just gotta have to know, we have to know how many we're gonna present to the warrant finance committee, how many changes are there gonna be, we have to have so many slots, is that how it works, Gavin?
Yeah.
I mean, we don't, we're not obligated to.
We have a rough draft, too, we can't say, oh, we've been thinking about this.
Okay.
Right.
We need a rough draft, and that's what I'm trying to.
Yeah.
Even if they're, you know, it's a rough draft, but.
At least it gives us something to look at and save the trouble.
I mean, like, for this contractor yards, there's some pretty simple corrections that we could, that we could do ourselves, we wouldn't have to wait for the consultant to do. For instance, I'm, I'm, I'll try not to take too much time with these things tonight, but it's, it's the time we have, and like, if you look at the top of his proposed contractor yards sheet, it says relative to mixed use buildings. So, we need to cross that out, into a contractor yard, at the very top in bold.
It's this one, it's this one.
Yeah. So we need to, you know, get that changed.
So get ready.
Yeah, then we have a draft for the contractor yards. Then, where would we put it in the ordinance, he's got four question marks in the, oh, no, in the land use chart. And I would propose two point seven point three, commercial and industrial.
Was that two point?
I don't, yeah.
But this is the discussion you wanna have at another meeting, right, but.
Yeah, but it's good to have your recommendations, assuming you can't make this meeting, if you could give these to Ashley to jot down.
That's all, yeah.
Yeah.
So, so as long as everyone agrees that they feel like contractor yards are a commercial slash industrial use in the land use chart. Which I think makes sense, because it's.
It's commercial.
Yeah, so two point seven point three, commercial industrial, where the four question marks are. And then I would, I think we should just put it at the end of that section, so we don't have to move all the letters.
I'm, where were the question, I'm looking for question marks here. Oh, I see.
In the.
Oh, okay, I get you now, okay.
Land use chart. So it would be, letter O after facilities which by their nature of their operation require shorefront location, yada, yada, and, so it would be letter O right here.
So just, yeah.
So just put this in here.
Now he wants it easy.
I like easy.
Then.
Took on the wrong job.
Just letter O. Right? Then if you look at the definition of a contractor yard, I feel like we're in good shape, but perhaps we should take out the word construction contractor, so it just says, you know, a, a building a lot, or portion of a lot, or parcel used to store and maintain construction equipment and other materials and facilities customarily required in the building trade by a contractor, not construction contractor.
Right.
Because a lot of these yards are, you know, people who pretty much drive for a living, or they, they have lots of different sized vehicles, they're not just construction, like you're building a house contractor, so I thought that would be.
Aren't there other contractors that could have stuff in their yard besides building contractors?
Exactly, and we'd wanna include them in this definition.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You could put tradesmen.
So this question mark, you want it to be an O?
That's what I'm thinking, is here's the land use chart, just the last one.
And the black swat falls, is O, just drop it.
Well, you could just, no, we're just adding a new one, right?
Instead of having to move all the letters.
Yeah. No, I don't blame, I see where you're coming from.
Then, um, there is some discussion to be had in the board about the actual land use chart, which zones we think it should be in, which I would, quickly, I would say, Aqua for Protection District, I would put a conditional use permit, instead of not permitted.
What, what's the after the Little Ospe one?
That's, um.
Not permitted.
Oh, right, but that, that's in the northern part of the town, it's pretty much just bulge pond.
Change it to conditional use?
No, not permitted. It's the same as, uh, resource protection shoreline, Little Ospe, but you pretty much usually get lumped together in that way, they're all like in the water, so to speak. And then, there was some, I had some standards that I had come up with probably three, four years ago, when we talked about this before, that could be put in, of course, this, this version doesn't have like a performance standards denoted in it, it was just gonna be the, the definition, the land use chart, and the good neighbor policy. If you look, it says, users are subject to the performance standards of five point eleven, which is the good neighbor policy. But I thought maybe we would wanna have some performance standards specific to contractor yards. Such as a size, like, I was thinking, they shouldn't be in excess of twenty-five thousand square feet, which is half an acre, but that's just a number, and we could do anything there. You know, how big are these, you know, should we limit them at some size? So they're not sprawling, so to speak. I'd like to have a note about seventy-five foot buffer with wetlands and streams for the contractor yards, so they're not not too close to these sensitive wetland areas that aren't protected in the resource protection shoreline Little Ospe district.
Yeah, because some of these, some of this equipment has a lot of stuff, chemicals and, and, or grises and.
Grease.
Yeah.
And just.
When we talk, when, when we talk about this, we talk about, like, say, a carpenter that's bringing junk home, just to say, hey, I can keep this and store it here, and you know, other than chemicals and any contractor yard, it, it kinda falls underneath it, I mean, I can have sixty ladders at my house, then what are you gonna do?
Well, I think it would, in large part, be if there was a complaint that so-and-so has their yard is getting out of hand, the, the guys are out there banging around, five o'clock in the morning, loading stuff up. It's not a residence, you know, there's ten trucks there in the daytime, because they all carpool to the site, or whatever it is, then that, that would be a trigger for us to look at this thing as a contractor yard, the actual line between someone's home occupation and they, they store their stuff next to their house, and when it becomes to the scale that it would be a nuisance, so to speak.
The, the only reason why I say this, to be honest, is there was a place on, I can remember a place on Garvin Road, that a contractor was living, he had a bunch of, I don't know, some people may call junk, it was his treasures, but there was a complaint, and this is before Jason's time, obviously, and you know, eventually the guy put a fence up, so they couldn't see it.
Right.
It was all, I mean, you might see it as junk, he might see it as, hey, I might use this in ten years. So, and that's a contractor, and that's a contractor yard, I, I mean.
But it would be a contractor yard, and, and most of what we would be asking him to do with these conditional use permits is to provide a buffer, so that it's not seen by the neighbors or people driving down the street.
But you're also restricting it, a half an acre?
Well, those are just, just some of my particular ideas, it's just throwing a number out there, I, I'm not sold on that number. I mean, I also have the, you know, the current size and age of the yard, that they would wanna report, how big it is, when it was created, so that we know if this thing's growing after ten, twenty years, or has the stuff moved around. You know, it wouldn't hurt to get written records of waste oil disposal, if they have lots of equipment. What are they doing with that waste oil, if they're changing oil in the yard there, what happens to it? Those are just some ideas that could be in a, in a short performance standard section in the ordinance pertaining to contractor yards. But the board might decide they think that the good neighbor policy takes care of it, so. And that's just food for thought, I guess, we don't, you know. But we can at least plug in some of these, where the things are gonna go in the ordinance.
So Gavin, what I have out of your standards is a seventy-five foot buffer from wetlands and, and natural resources?
Yeah, I mean, that's.
You said what?
I had wetlands and streams, just because some, um, streams aren't as well protected in the ordinance as.
No, they're not, especially intermittent streams.
Yeah. The current size and age of the yard, just so we know if it falls within the, the size that we like, I mean, you could have this contractor yards have to be under two acres in size, we could pick any number. Yeah, the, the buffer, the size, and then, just, just food for thought on that one.
Yeah.
And then also in the, the land use chart right now, as it stands now, it's not permitted in the critical rural district zone, and I wonder how many of these things exist in the critical rural area right now, that we would be ma, making a, a not permitted use when, of the person. Or, or should we not worry about that in the critical rural?
We'll have to have a list of contractor yards somewhere.
The guy's the critical rural between me and you is Milton Mills Road.
Right, well, yeah, there's, um.
One side or the other.
Right, there's this, like, along Milton Mills Road isn't critical rural.
Why wouldn't we allow it in? Why wouldn't we allow it in critical rural?
Um, because that's what's proposed by the.
Right, I'm just asking you, I'm asking the board, why would we not allow it?
It's, it's, in the regular rural, it's, uh, conditional use, but in the critical rural, which is on this map is the dark green.
Right, right.
And the reason that this critical rural was, um, defined.
They don't, headed towards Fox's Ridge. Dark green, I can't see this now.
Different.
You got like spears of glass, it's over here.
Because these are the new ones that they just gave us tonight. Yeah, this actually, Pat just pointed out to me that this, oh no, that maybe you're looking at the mixed use buildings. Well, right here.
What are we talking about here?
Right, look, right here, contractor yard not permitted.
Fox's Ridge, God, you know where Goding Road is?
Contractor yard not permitted. This is mixed use. It's because it's so small on the new version. Okay, so this, um, let's see what it says. It's basically, um, critical rural is to help protect, uh, let's see what it says in the. This district is designed to preserve important natural features within watershed boundaries and large undeveloped areas surrounding undeveloped great ponds. Let's hope. The reason that we have a, a dark green and a light green, the light green is more sensitive areas, like down here, um. Is the South Acton swamps, not shown on this map, but is shown on this map, right here. And these are state and, I think they're federal, because it's, some of them are, um, inland fisheries.
Those are off those old logging roads back there, right behind, uh, Cryxax property.
Right, so that's the mire right here, and that is, uh, part of the South Acton swamps, is one of the, um. At least state identified areas to be protected in the town, and then the northern part of the town right here. Is right here, is, that's what they call the, in the comprehensive plan, it's called the northern aquifer of the town. So part, you know, part of the reason for this being critical rural is because it's pretty much an aquifer.
So they're saying that's a swamp, though?
Which.
Uh, South Acton.
Well, the South Acton swamp is, uh, is just a, a broad term for wetlands that exist here, um.
That's why if you look out my front door, you walk right into the woods, it's right there, right?
Yeah.
Mostly a beaver pond, I can recall from a kid.
Sure.
You know?
So. So, Pat, you're saying you think it should be allowed in?
Well, you know, what Bernie was saying about people living in town, blue collar and.
Yeah.
If you live on one side of Milton Mills Road and I live on the other, then essentially, the only thing that's dividing them.
I mean, if.
You can store your stuff.
I'm, I'm kind of with Pat on this one, because as long as they're maintaining that buffer, why can't, why shouldn't they?
And they're not in the resource protection.
Right.
I don't think that should be in there.
You're far pressed to get a house way back there anyways, I mean.
So I'd ra, I'd think I'd rather see that as a conditional.
Right, well, that's just something that, I, I, that's fine with me, I just, something I was pointing out, um.
Because that puts you.
Yeah, I was just saying, we live on the same road.
Right.
Off the same road.
And you're far.
That defines that, I mean, it's the same land.
Yeah.
Going the same way as the road.
Right.
I think that's unfair.
It's not, not like what we ran into up here, right? Just, all of a sudden, he's, finds himself in a commercial district and can't do what he needed to do. All of a sudden, you find you can't have a yard just because of where you already exist. Because even from your house, that's quite a bit of a, little bit of a hike to get into that, right? As, as I can recall, I'm in the back room a little bit.
You been walking out your yard lately?
No, I go up through the, my other neighbor's yard. Some good deer hunting up there, some good fishing back there. It's all old logging roads, right?
Trespasser.
Three or four logging roads back there.
So.
Back there.
I know, well, that's what happens.
It is.
And that, and it's so hard to go, we had, you know, I was worried about this last fall, we could just, the lack of meetings. And we felt like we had adequate time, but this happens every year.
Right.
And we end up having to just pull through it, so to speak, so I guess we should set that date for the special meeting.
Right, I really.
Was it a meeting or a workshop, we didn't call it a workshop?
We can call it a workshop, it doesn't matter, it's still gonna have to be on tape.
Find a time, my suggestion would be that we speak with Jennifer, find a block of time. Several hours that would be available, most likely weekly. That those that can come, doesn't have to be the same people every time, but as long as there's at least two people. I think we should try to identify which prioritize the warrants, so that we try to get, you know, hopefully we'll get everything done. But we'll get done the ones that we really need to get done. And during those workshops, that's all we're gonna do, and we can have. Substantive, deep discussions about it, and then, you know, then bring for the tweaking part to a general meeting. But as much as we get into little thing, things that we think are just a tweak. They're often not, because we haven't discussed, I mean, for example, I've, I've just sat and really not participated in this discussion. Because I sent an email out that I, I really want to know the whole genesis of why the contractor's yard. That I have concerns about, similar to the solar panels, around, um, the privacy stuff. We heard about how difficult that is with solar panels, how's that gonna be any different with this? How is a contractor's yard different than a farm? People living next to a farm and they live their tractors out and this and that, and. So those are the, like, the deeper discussion that I'm not ready to move forward without having. And we don't really have time for those. Even if we have the time, we're all tired, because we just did two or three hours on other things. So that was why I suggested last time that we, because we do need to carry on the application process and stuff. But we also, in my view, we need blocks of time where this is all we're talking about. I, I just think that's the way it's gonna move forward, or in the alternative, if people don't like that, then maybe divide them up. And, you know, somebody does the really deep thinking process and writes what they think and why. But I, I think it's better if it's collaborative, because as an individual, it's easy to, to miss other perspectives.
Yeah, I think it has to be collaborative, because then individuals would bring their thing to the table, and we.
Yeah.
Go right into the details and where you could hash it out at this workshop.
Well, we're gonna need ten days for, for that, so we're not gonna be able to do it before the next meeting.
Right, but if we. If we know that starting Tuesdays at three, we're gonna do this on an ongoing basis, then we can just keep promoting that on an ongoing basis.
All right, let's start it up.
Yeah, for the first one, we need to, yeah, and we need to arrange that it's gonna be filmed and, but there would be no voting at it.
Right.
Hopefully it's later than three.
Whatever, whatever works, but, um, but I think, you know, we need a good block of time, like three hours, three, four hours to, to get anything done.
See, Jason, you gotta check with Jen on that then.
If we need ten days, do, are you sure that it is ten days, we need?
It's ten days.
That's how long we need to schedule a meeting, I mean.
Right.
To give the proper notice.
Yeah.
I guess.
I mean, I, I feel.
I think, I feel that there's been meetings that we've had that wasn't, like, so we, there was times where we just, we're gonna meet next week, you know, and we've done that.
Yeah, let's ask.
And I will ask that, and if that is a possibility, I'd rather just not wait ten days and just shoot for the beginning of next week and go for that. But I have a feeling that I don't think this is gonna require a ten day notice. Um, I don't think, I, I don't think I did it the last time I pulled in a, a special, uh, a meeting, I think it was just, all right, next week, let's meet.
That's why I was asking.
We have to have it more advanced.
I don't know, I don't know, I'm so new to this whole municipality thing.
I know they've been done in the past by a previous planning board.
Yes.
I know they were recorded, I don't know about the notice issue.
So we also have to be able to.
Stops us from the site.
So, let's, yeah, maybe, so.
I just wanted to make sure we had the meeting just twenty-seven, because, no, that's through my whole life.
Right, no, that's what I'm trying to do, but.
So right now, we, we have a meeting.
It's hard for us to actually work on it, like, I could, I could go right to mixed use buildings and try to go through what I came up with, but. It gets difficult, because it's not like a full conversation after the meeting, like, you know.
Right.
And, but I. May- maybe we should at least make a, tonight make a list of the ones that we want to put forward.
I think we end that list.
Yeah, well, I know, we had a list in one of the minutes.
Had a list, but now we just added storage, that storage one, which isn't really an add, it's a.
No, it was on here.
Oh, was it?
Looking at the minutes from December second.
Speaking of that, did you guys want to review the minutes that we had given, I gave you a couple sets of minutes last week, you guys want to review them, so we can push them, we don't have to table them again? That, that was one of the, we didn't get to last time.
Yep, I've read them, I'm ready if anyone else is.
Because I didn't want to flood, I have another set ready to go, and I just wasn't gonna flood you with it today, I just, um.
December second and sixteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Where is my?
I didn't read that.
You know, it must be on my, it must be on my desk.
I'm sure everybody's read them by now, right?
Yeah.
Do you want to just do one, but, one and then, or just group them both together in a motion?
There were a couple of, uh.
On the sixteenth, on the third page at the bottom. Chief Smith would like to inspect rental properties to avoid oversight. I don't think that's correct.
I think if you just put the, um. Put in, um. It's pretty much to avoid the CEO oversight, so to speak, is, is what we were trying to say, is that, uh. The fire department would be doing the inspections, so that the CEO didn't have to do the inspection.
Right, so he's not inundated with inspections all the time, even though he likes to get out of the office, I'm sure.
Hundred percent.
If, okay, if that's the intent, then I think you gotta add CEO there.
But, uh.
Bottom of.
The very bottom, yeah.
Chief Smith.
Chief Smith will inspect rental properties to. Yeah, I mean, I don't think, we could just, we could just say he, he will inspect rental properties to provide education, implement corrections. Just get rid of, avoid oversight altogether.
What were the minutes, though? What, what were they? Because I know Ashley was doing them verbatim.
You don't, you don't want to see the verbatim ones, they're like twelve, fifteen pages long. Okay, sorry, twenty-eight pages long.
Do we need to do that, by the way, versus just motions?
Well, what was going on?
Tapes or minutes?
So what was going on was, um, Ashley was doing a set of minutes, and then it was coming in front of me, and, um. There was a lot of cha, I was doing too many changes, and it was just time consuming for both of us, she was doing something, and then I was doing something, and then. Um, so then we were like, well, let's try verbatim, and then that, it was just like.
Yeah.
It was just, uh, I think it was stressing Ashley out more than it needed.
Yeah, I mean, I would think that just, the motions and votes and attendance.
Well, we tried to get, well, we tried to give a description of some, like a paraph, maybe not even a paraphrase, but a brief summary of, uh, of what's going on, so that. What, this is a lot of times where I have to go back into the mi, the old minutes and, and look at things and see what's, what was reviewed or how the conditions were set.
Well, yeah, yeah, I mean, like, if it just said, Chief Smith addressed the board on rentals. Rentals, that would do it, so you would know which tape, which date and which tape to go back and review if you wanted to see verbatim.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, unless there's a motion made, it doesn't have to be recorded in the minutes.
Yeah, yeah.
I can make them really simple for you guys and just put motions in. I'm just kidding, though.
Well, I mean, it's, you know, you want to just kind of draw the line between that, you give, give enough information so we, so that we mentally recall what the conversation was like.
Yeah, yeah.
But not so much that, um, it's a, it's a hassle for you all, too, because it's.
Well, that's kind of what, so that's what I was doing, so when, when the minutes were done, that, that, Ashley was summarizing them to the best of her ability, and then I was trying to put more clarity to them. So that if somebody came in and wanted to review the minutes, and they actually knew what we were talking about, so. But it came to a point where, all right, how much can I add? I can't just start adding somebody, something to the stuff, even, you know, for my interpretation or for better myself. So that's kind of where we, we struggled to try to figure out, um, what we were gonna do, and, uh.
Yeah, I, I think the suggestion to just jog the memory of what we talked about, some chief smith addressed, and then.
Yeah.
They can look at the tape.
Right.
Even if, if it just notes attendance, that he was here, you'd know which meeting.
Right.
He spoke at.
And then they can watch the video.
Right.
And have the option to fast forward and rewind, instead of sitting there listening to us.
Save for Ashley a lot of work.
Right.
The only other thing, the second thing on that, I, this, we don't have to make this change under this, uh, suggestion that we're just talking about. But the discussion you had with McCoy, Seth McCoy, concerning the, uh, the tar pit pile that he trucked in. The paragraph talks about the hazardous and the environmental stuff, but at some point in there, we pointed out, he violated the, the ordinance. And that doesn't come out in that paragraph, he, he wasn't, it wasn't an authorized use for his, his, uh. His pit.
What? Is it an authorized use, or?
It's a like use.
Like use.
Yes, but he has to get conditional approval.
I wouldn't even say it really is a like use, because we've never, we've never had these pits trucking stuff in. All the conditional use permits are, they're taking the stuff out, every single one of them. That's, that is something that's consistent across the board, they never bring anything in unless they need more loam to revegetate. So I mean, it is, we are stepping into unfamiliar territory with that, um, people.
Well, that was a, so that was a concern that was brought to me, um, by Seth, he, he said he spent the weekend reading. And, I just, I guess, I'd like to have some clarity from, from the planning board, too, because that will help me out. Um, in land use chart, it says, under other uses, um, mineral extraction, um, for, so it starts out on the top of the page, it says mineral extraction industry. But then it goes down to uses, oh wait, I, uses which are similar to conditional uses. And. I know you're saying that it's not a similar review thing, but it's not even in for conditional use. It's in for subject to CEO review or permitting by the CEO.
I thought there was language we read last week that said that.
And that's kind, and that's how he, and that's how Mr. McCoy addressed, came at me with this one, was that it shouldn't even be, uh, uh, up for conditional use. It should be, it's a like use thing, so that would be up for.
Well, I respectfully disagree, all the stuff into reclaim is not mining. It's not mine, it's not like mining, it's a recognition.
That's one thing that we have to make clear, and, and I'll even tell him myself, but I want to make sure that he knows that, um.
Well, we already told him at the subsequent meeting where.
Well, everybody's looking for a loop, everybody looks for a loophole, and that was, he was trying, he was fishing for one, and, and so, uh, I just wanted to bring it up to the board and see what they said.
Yeah.
Are you looking for it, Bernie, or are you looking for something else?
Yeah, because I thought that I read something to him the last meeting that. Said nothing, that it dealt only with what was already at the site and not being trucked in.
That's right, that's in the performance standard.
Right, right, well, that was a discussion we had John brought up, right, I think, on the first page of the conditional use. Not in the actual review procedure, but in those conditional use permits, existing conditional user or structure. And then it has the two boxes and then the two more boxes. Proposed use has not changed the original use, so that, we were already like on the edge with that. Proposed use does not change the original use. So that, we were already, like, on the edge with that.
He, he, uh.
Because we're turn-, we're turning a pit into a recycling facility, so we, we kind of looked the other way a little bit, but then the second one, the proposed use, exactly. Proposed use does not substantially alter, expand or alter the original use, and and then we were, you know, and then there's the two subcategories under there, an increased area of twenty-five percent or more, or new materials or processes not previously associated with the existing use.
Okay.
So we, we could have, according to this, we could have, we could have said no on the stumps.
Yeah.
As far as I can tell, because he's. He is changing the original use from a pit to a recycling facility. I mean, he even had that on the
Mm-hmm.
application, and then there are, you know, he, there are new materials or processes not previously associated, but we kind of said, oh, well, there's stumps on the site, he's got to grind those up anyway.
So if he, if he wants asphalt.
But then once, I mean, yeah, I mean, if he was hauling in any other material other than stumps, I mean, I, I don't see what he could be hauling in that would.
Yeah, I know, and I know you've stated this last time, too, so if he, if he wants asphalt, he needs to come back.
Mm-hmm.
With a new condition.
That's what we told.
Yeah, and I.
In six months' time.
Well, we'll see.
No, I'm just kidding. Uh, the, uh, so. Yeah, I'm, I'm fine. I just got to make sure that we're doing the right thing, and, and I'm not stepping on anybody's toes or, or however this goes on.
But, um, when you're looking at the land use chart and you've got these, um, you've got mineral extraction industrial, then you've got uses and structures accessory to conditional uses, you've got uses which are similar to conditional uses, and you've got use and structures which are similar to permitted uses. These are, these are like catchalls so that we can do a conditional use permit for something that doesn't exactly fall into the category. If you look at the definition of a conditional use permit, and so that we, we can use a conditional use permit for pretty much any permit we need to issue that is in site plan review or of these other echelons. You know what I mean? Those are kind of like a catch-all. I wouldn't say that the applicant can be using just multiple
like situations.
On the land use chart, I mean, it's, I think that when he, you know, that, he was saying he's permitted to, you know, you look on the land use chart, you're allowed to move under a, you know, five, whatever it is, under a thousand yards of material around, but he's already moving how many thousands of yards of material just by having the mineral extraction pits? You can't really say, you can throw that in there because he's not just moving under a thousand yards, even if it's different material. It's, some of these things are like catchalls so that we can give them a permit of some sort.
Mm-hmm.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, good. Yeah, we went through that with him.
Yeah. I just bringing it up because it was, it, he, he brought it up to me, and I wanted to make sure that I didn't blindside you guys, or I didn't make, say, make a wrong call, or, or step, like I said, or step on anybody's toes, and I, I wanted to get your opinion on it, too, so, um.
You know, uses which are similar to conditional uses is different than an expansion of conditional use. That's just, it's, right, it's like a catch-all. I don't, it's weird that it's, you know.
I'd like to suggest, Gavin, you make a copy or let them make a copy of your solo panel comments.
I don't know how, yeah.
If you.
It wasn't a. I don't know, but, yeah, I guess, I guess so. I mean, I, a lot of the points that I put on there are kind of like, leads to a discussion, so.
Yeah, but if we read them first and then we come in for a meeting, we're more ready for the discussion, I think.
Yeah, and the workshop can address, try to address some of those points in the draft.
Yeah.
I like that idea.
Sleep again?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the way, more of my, I think, is like going home, like seeing it, reading it, sleeping on it, you know, coming back and talk about it, maybe sleep on it again, talk about it, but, I mean, we're running out of that type of time, but it helps just to kind of wrap our heads around it.
Right. I mean, I could quickly run through the, the things that I.
All right.
I.
Do that, and then we need to move on, I think. We need to have Jason establish.
We have to figure out the minutes, too. We kind of got sidetracked.
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So let's. What was that?
We, we need a motion for the minutes of, uh, was it December second and December sixteenth?
Okay. I'll fix that, those typos anyway, and, and get them corrected.
With the correct terminology.
Are they adding violation over here in the last one? Are you adding that, or what happened?
Well, my point was that discussion included the fact that he wasn't authorized to do that under his existing conditional use, and that came up. It got heated about the environmental thing.
Right, the hazardous.
Yeah, but the bottom line was that he wasn't approved to do that, so I thought we could just add, and he was an author, it's not an authorized use for the ordinance.
Yeah.
In that last paragraph. And then if you put CEO, you know, if you want to just change it to chief Smith addressed us, that'd be fine, and then.
That's written December sixteenth.
All right, so I will move that the December second and December sixteenth, twenty twenty-one minutes be approved with the uh, corrections cited by John Qua.
Should I get a second?
Oh, a second.
All in favor? By?
I did have, quickly, on December second, the list on the front here, this little list. The planning board is concerned with, such as, I don't, I don't think we're doing anything with the good neighbor policy.
No.
Second one down, so I was, proposed that we got rid of that, and then the fourth one down, it says clean storage. We just put storage units, because what we're talking about is.
Yeah.
That's good.
Storage units, because that, and, because, because what we'd said was we need to clean up the
What we.
The verbiage.
What we just talked about?
Yeah. So those were the only corrections I saw in in that one.
I think we could remove marijuana, too, because we determined, we don't have to do anything with that.
But we, yeah.
Yeah, because we, uh.
You know, it's. It's also a good reason to redact the minutes to just be motions and votes, because then there's less to look at correcting.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, seriously.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
How did, how did we do it before, pre-Jason and Ashley with the minutes?
Well, there was some, it was, it was motions, but it was also like the, the most substantive parts of the conversation were noted.
Yeah.
Do you have any old ones that?
Uh, we have them all downstairs. You can come and read them anytime.
I don't want to read them. I'm just trying to get a basis for, to make it easier.
You do. That'll be easier for us.
I've talked to you enough. I don't want to do them.
They're your minutes. Chairman should do them himself.
That's why we have a secretary.
She's also my secretary. I keep her.
You good with the motion and the vote? Those changes, so the changes that I said, I also said the ones that Gavin said.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll, 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 we'll make the changes for you guys and, and.
Then we're good. And then you're going to check to make sure we don't have to have attendee, and if we don't, when we could have room in the film?
I mean, if we do it downstairs, could we do it downstairs, too?
So I believe last time we set a, a thing, and I can put it on tonight before I leave here, I can, I can put it on the agenda, so I think last time I set a special meeting, I think Jen went in the office and just put it on right away, and then, but, let me verify that. I'll, I'll, I'll put it on tonight. I'll change, like, the, um, the meeting schedule, and I'll put on, I don't know, all right, when? Let's go with that.
Well, because we have a meeting scheduled for the twentieth, and we have one for the twenty-seventh.
I won't put it on tonight, but when would you guys like to do it? Because that will be a determining factor, too.
Can ask Jennifer when, because they, right, in coordinating with the filming, with availability here, where there might be like a three or four-hour block on a regular basis.
I like my op-, I like my working times for those three to four-hour works.
Tuesdays at three, or whatever, or, you said later than three.
You don't necessarily have to be there.
No, I don't. I'm just kidding.
Yeah, I mean.
No, I, I, no, I.
Move the football.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
So really, the discussion is what day do we think is better for everybody than Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, assuming if she says, when do you want to do it?
Mm-hmm.
It's really about the film, because we could use the office and pinch, right?
Oh, yeah, definitely. Yeah, it's all set, it's set up down there, and I can bring some tables down and, and.
He has ongoing work and home commitments that, you know, like, I'm never available before four, or whatever.
Like Chris, right?
Yeah, never available before four. But Mondays are tough for me, because I got, one of my kids, like, has to go to dance, and I already miss Thursday's dance, because.
The other thing, too, is if we go too late in the day, then, you know, if you say it's going to be at four, and it's going to be like three or four hours, then it cuts into my dinner.
Right.
So, well, we'll order pizzas. I don't need them, but I.
You're right. Bad cholesterol.
You know, even if it's two of us.
Three, it's got to be three.
Right.
It has to be three for a workshop.
Yeah.
Even when I'm.
You're going to, you're, I think you'll get fouled up with general if you, if we have workshops with just two people discussing the stuff.
I'll, I'll find out more, but I, I feel that Gavin's right on this one. I think I've heard that already. I'll double-check. I'll ask a bunch of questions tomorrow.
I don't, yeah, that would be helpful, because actually, how's that any different than select board doing office hours?
Six o'clock.
They're not voting on anything.
Yeah, clear, well, get it.
I don't see where it's any different, but we need to find out.
Clearing up to take up all our time.
Yeah, we need to find out.
I remember hearing workshops didn't require that.
Yeah, I'll, 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 I'll use that term, that verbiage to the workshop, you know?
Yep.
And not a meeting, it's more of a workshop, and.
And we probably should, when it is promoted, that it, you know, it says workshop on ordinance drafting or whatever, so people know.
Show up, just do it anyway.
What we're doing.
So do we know, so do we know, like, to, you can't do it Monday, you said, and, and I know you don't need everybody here, so it works best for the majority, I guess. I don't really care.
I'm usually available.
Tuesdays are out for me.
Tuesdays are out for you.
Monday and Wednesdays I can do.
I know the select board have a meeting on Wednesdays, and so if, if it is required camera footage, we have to make sure that we can have two people here, because there'll be one upstairs and one downstairs if it has to be recorded.
Well, we could do it before the selectman's meeting up here, and the camera would just have to set up at one place, the tables would be ready.
Yeah, because if you guys, if you can come in early, say, three o'clock, and their meeting's at six, they can just roll right over.
Yeah.
Who cares about Chris?
Let's, let's shoot for that. Wednesday's at three.
Wednesday at three?
That would work for me.
I mean, it's, it's going to work.
I'm out on that one.
Oh, you're out on Wednesday, too?
I can't make it at three.
Why don't, yeah.
Oh, no, but you can show up whenever you get back into town. Who cares if you're covered in paint?
Right.
I mean, what are the chances we're going to have anything done by four, anyway?
Right.
Just saying.
Right, the way things go. You might still be talking about.
Talking about.
December sixteenth minutes.
What we're going to talk about.
So I'm going to, I'm going to shoot for Wednesday before the, uh, selectman's meeting. I'll ask, I'll talk to the town administrator and see what she has to say, if it's a possibility, and if it is, then we're going to.
So as early as three?
Yeah.
Nineteen at three o'clock.
Yeah, so now we've got, that's public notice right there.
Yeah.
On the camera. So, see if, see if that works. I mean, I hope it does, because I, I feel, you know, we're, I don't want to run out of time on these things.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I just think removing that pressure, too, will, will work better, it'll be more relaxed, and.
Well, you, you know, it's easier to think about these things, too.
Right. I mean, I don't really want to, but I mean, we have Saturdays, too.
No.
Okay, I'm just throwing it out there. I have to, I have to work Saturday anyway, so feel free to come in at eight o'clock, from eight to twelve.
Yeah, how was the sidewalk? Did, was it, anyone there?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we had a couple of other.
Speaking of unreclaimed sand pits.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, that, that road has all, it's all unre-, unreclaimed.
Ninety percent of those pits in there are unreclaimed, you know, what happened to the loam?
Right.
That was sold off. First thing to go.
I think the, I could read through what I have for the solar, but I think one of the biggest things we need to figure out is what we're going to do with the existing language in the ordinance that denotes these things as conditional uses, and what we're going to do with the new proposed land use chart and verbiage, which depicts them as site plan review, if we want to have these solar farms as conditional use or as site plan review. I think that's one of the biggest things. I mean, I have some other inconsistencies in the document.
Yeah.
But that's the biggest thing that the board needs to think about, I think. Because I, and, and are we going to take out our existing verbiage and replace it with this?
Mm.
Because they're, they are different, because the existing verbiage is installed on existing structure and installed on a non-existing structure, whereas this has got the accessory, which, the medium and the large, so it's, it's.
Right, and the language talks about small, so there's problems with.
Right, exactly. And that's one of the things I had, was that we had at the top, solar farm medium in the definitions, but then in the verbiage, small solar farms.
Good night, Ashley. Thank you.
So, yeah, the site plan review. One of these, one of these things says it's, that your solar array can't be taller than the building next to it. So is that what we like, or do we want to let a tiny house be there with a twenty-five-foot array next to it? Yeah, and then just, yeah, most of it was, that I had was just kind of small discussion topics, so. I'll try to, I'll try to figure out if that meeting's happening and try to attend it so that we can.
Well, you'll get an email.
Well, yeah, he'll get an email. We'll never actually get the email.
We can call him.
I'll call him. I'll call him when left. Speaking of that, I called you. What do you want to do with those?
All the windows, yeah.
You're on camera.
Yeah.
On them or not? If not.
I wanted, you said they'd be at the dump by now, so.
Well.
Well, we saved them.
I've had, I've been a little, I've been a little occupied responding to a bunch of emails about a moratorium.
Yeah, we, we put our neck.
Yeah.
Huh?
We put our neck out for.
Yeah.
For Gavin.
I might grab, I might grab a couple of the ones that open. I could do it tonight.
We definitely put our neck out for you on that.
Yeah. We put one open that all night.
So, you good?
Yeah.
John wants to say something.
I guess so. We'll try to, yeah.
John's all packed up, ready to go.
Yeah. And I think that we should take some time, maybe at the workshop, and read through site plan review. I don't think we've actually done a site plan review yet.
I was actually going to ask you, what is the differ, the main difference between a site plan review and a conditional use?
This is the site plan review checklist. It is nine pages.
It's more involved.
This is the conditional use. It's three pages.
So if you were, if you were starting, and this is just from my own knowledge, obviously, if you were starting a business, not a, so, why doesn't an extraction pit go through site plan review and not?
Well, if you, this is something that I was going to talk about with the board, is that we could, site plan review could be applicable to these mineral extraction sites. We could, we could just up, up the permit, so to speak, from conditional use to site plan review that these things have to go through. It's the, uh, fourth applicability, the fourth one down, establishment of a new use, non-structural, non-residential uses. So it is included. Most of site plan review is when you're putting in buildings. A lot of the verbiage has to do with buildings, but there is some better verbiage, um, in here. And that, that's kind of why I want to read through it with the board.
Mm-hmm.
But at the same time, there is, there is some verbiage not in site plan review, because it's like state language. There's nothing about the comprehensive plan in the site plan review. So there's some trace. So there's some trade-offs there. But I, I think. These pits could be site plan review, but I'm worried to lose some of the finer details of. It's weird, it's weird how the two permits are, because you, you would lose a couple of things moving to site plan review, even though it's a more rigorous review. So it is something that, you know, get these things side by side and go through them at some point, yet another thing.
The list keeps growing.
Well, it's all, honestly, once we get through this next year, I feel like the board is gonna be updated, so to speak, and things are gonna start to flow differently. Right now, there's so much discussion on understanding the verbiage of each use that's existent, finding it. Being familiar with the charts and the. Performance standards and such, and I feel like we're covering a lot of ground with what we're doing with these amendments and that. It's gonna help us in the long run, it's just. We do tend to lose people during this updating process, like by the time the people, new members of the board get updated, they're like, oh, I don't wanna do that anymore. And then you have to go through the same thing again and, um, so, but I feel like we are. You know, we are slugging through it and that it will be easier to. To go through the ordinance next year, once we've, once we've done what we're trying to do, so.
Yes, John.
I moved weird German, Mr. German.
Second?
All in favor?
Are you going back down now?